Super quick, I just wanted to give my kids a quick shout out. Um, I see Mr. Luke Keneleinen is on the line with us here. Um, he is our eighth grade student of the month. I'm also from the middle school, sixth grade, Jana Bonneville and Devin Murphy. From the high school, ninth grader Chandler Hips, 10th grader Kaylee Varner, 11th grade William Anderson. And our 12th grade representative is Caleb Anderson. So congratulations all those students. Um, Luke, because you're here, I just want to give a special shout out for uh spending the time to be with this everybody. Thanks.
Okay, did we have any public comment? No public comment.
No public comment has been submitted.
Okay, financial report pages 11 to 23, approval of monthly check register pages 11 through 20.
Okay, so uh Mr. Derwin reviewed the uh accounts payable for the month of March. Um, he received this via email. I didn't come in to review it and he had no questions. He reviewed that on April 8th. And so um I asked the board approve the March accounts payable uh check run in the amount of six hundred and sixty seven thousand, two hundred and sixty six dollars and forty five cents.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I need a second.
A second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, financial report.
So uh the one quick thing that I just want to uh a good thing that I want to let you all know. Uh, some of you know that we use uh the Michigan Purchasing Card Consortium through MSBO. Um, and it is the bank is the BMO Harris Bank. And so what this allows, it allows teachers and it's used primarily at the elementary level. Um, and they have an amount on their card uh around two hundred dollars that they can use in their classrooms. We also um let teachers who are um in charge of a group or a club uh have one. Administration has one, secretaries have one. So what it does is it really helps us expedite purchasing and to do online purchasing. And the reason why we do it, that's the primary reason why I do it, so that uh secretaries do not have to be doing all sorts of purchase orders. And it's also a way for us, we can see that in real time, the purchases that are being made. Um, and the, we've been running this program for years and years and years, but the the also great thing is that we do get a rebate back. And so we uh our spend for, let's see here, glasses on. Our spend for 2019 was over, just was right around two hundred thousand dollars. Um, I know that that might sound like a lot, um, but when you break it out for the whole district in over 12 months, it actually isn't a non-large ticket spend rebate percentage. So we got um like thirty basis points, which is like point three percent back. But what that means is for free money, six hundred and five dollars in free money um just for using this P card program. So not only does it help us with just our 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 procedures on it, it makes us more efficient that way. We actually got some money back on it, six hundred dollars. So we we deposit that into just um a general sixty one account, which is like a student fund account. But we will use that for when something special comes up and we need to find a few extra dollars, we will use that money for that. So that's, that's a good thing that I just wanted to pass along um as another reason as to why we do the purchase card program. So that's all I have for that.
I'm sorry. Um.
And the next piece was the scholarships. You want me just to go right into that?
Yes, thank you, sorry.
That's okay, yeah, it's a little, little weird right now. So I wanted to give you guys a scholarship update. And um I want to differentiate that the scholarships that I'm talking about are ones where we've been giving a, been given a larger sum of money. And then the instructions were to invest that money and then give out scholarships from the interest that is earned in a given year. Okay, um. And so these ones, I will list them for you. It's the Valenti Scholarship, the Erickson Scholarship, the Murphy Scholarship, McCormick and Metzner. Um, and so up to this point, we have had these in all separate accounts by their name. Uh, and they have been in an investment account and sitting agree with the AmeriPrize has been managing them for us. And um at the end of the year, December 31st of the calendar year, whatever that interest that we have earned uh would go to that year's senior. The Market Community Foundation, this is really their expertise is to handle scholarships and grants. And so a couple of months ago, I started doing some research with them to see what it would be like to move our scholarships over to them. Primarily, the reason for doing that is, well, one, we have some other scholarships with them already. You're familiar with the Spade Scholarship. Um, they also handle the Alumni Scholarship and the new Dion Brown Scholarship. So one of the reasons for moving the other scholarships over is that they would all be in one place. They would still all be separate and accounted for separately. Um. The other reason is that we've gotten some new guidance on uh the things that we hold in trust. And a lot of these scholarships, like I don't really have any paperwork from from back in the day when we got got them. And the only way that we're really allowed to hold monies in trust is when they're, it's legally set up as a trust. And there's their own board and that sort of thing. We we don't have that with any of these. Now, are we really going to get into trouble if we continue to to handle things the same way? No, we're really not because um. Well, we're just not. I mean, there's just somebody, somebody to have to really raise a stink over that. But I think the point that I'm trying to make is that it would just be cleaner if we had these scholarships over with the community foundation. And that would also be the Gwynne Area Community Fund, might be familiar with that. Um, John Mackey is the chair of that, Jamie Glockner is also on that board. Um, and so in in doing some research, I've had them run some numbers. Um, the scholarships are gonna run the give that we'd be able to award every year about the same. Um. Nothing else would change when it comes to uh the distribution of these, or I should say the awarding of them. We would um allow the Gwynne Community Fund, which is the advisory committee, pick the scholarship winner based on the current guidelines for picking a scholarship winner, so that wouldn't change. I've been in communication with some of the scholarship family members, some there isn't anybody, we don't have any. Uh, we don't have any family to reach out to or anything in our files uh to find people on to reach out to. And um, so the process is really, it's twofold. We would actually have a um an agreement between the Market Community Foundation, Gwynne Area Community Schools to gift that money over and then how that scholarship is to be given out going forward. Uh, the other thing that they would change is that instead of us then requesting the money from the investment, you know, essentially cashing out something from the stocks or the bonds or mutual funds and then paying the recipient, the student. The community foundation would take care of all of that and they would then distribute to the institution of that student where they were going. Um, so that that is another good uh thing to have in place for that. So all in all, there is over these five or six scholarships, the the gift would be just over about a hundred thousand dollars. Now, mind you, this is not general fund money, okay? I want to make that very clear. This is, this has nothing to do with our general fund. This is money that we have had uh being held in investment for scholarships anyways. And so this, this doesn't affect that. I know that sounds like a lot of money, so um. And it would be gifting it to them and then there would be an agreement or bylaw, so to speak, between us and the foundation for each of these scholarships and how they were to be awarded. So it really is just a process and it just cleans it up and um I just wanted to give you. We need to have somebody mute their mic there. I have it. Um, so i- it's really just an update. If anybody has any questions, you're welcome to call me or email me on this. And um it, I see this is probably taking about another month or so to complete. Um, I just sent an email out to Mr. McCormick, it's Jim McCormick, he's a nephew of uh George McCormick. Again, to to confirm in writing what their uh scholarship requirements would be so that we could build that into the paperwork. Um, I've emailed uh Mr. Valenti's niece to let her know of our intentions of moving this forward. Haven't heard back from her, so, but I've let her know if she has any questions, she can, she can let me know. So there's, you know, out of all of these um scholarships, there is, you know, so. Work to do on each of them to get this to all play out. Um, and we're just walking through that. One of the scholarships, the uh, there's one, the the Cohotis. Cohotis has less than um two thousand dollars, excuse me, it has two thousand dollars, which is less than ten thousand. Ten thousand is the minimum that the fund requires before they can disperse. And so that fund or that scholarship would be silent until it earned its interest built enough to get it to ten thousand dollars. This is a scholarship that we gave out pretty sporadically because it's such a low amount that it really doesn't earn that much interest to begin with. Um, it was originally, it was a preferred stock before I even got here. Um, it was given to us in the eighties and at one point the preferred stock, the dividends were like forty cents a year and we couldn't do anything with it. So I just reinvested it into something that actually could earn some dividends so that we could get about fifty bucks a year. And so about every four years is when we award that scholarship. So that scholarship would end up being dormant for a while until it could earn some more money. Um, so it really just a, just an update for you all uh to let you know that that's the intention is to kinda clean it up, so to speak, uh make it just a little bit more understandable by keeping all of our scholarships in one place, which would be with the community, the Market Community Foundation, which is the umbrella, which is over the Gwynne Area Community Fund. So, okay, do we have any, any, any thoughts or questions or anything on that?
No, okay. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you. I'll mute myself now.
Superintendent's report, board update.
So this is not the first Zoom meeting of the last month. Um, it has been uh very active in uh meeting with uh state. Uh, my state org superintendent's organization and multiple updates and Zoom meetings as well as um Marissa Superintendent's have been meeting every couple of weeks via Zoom. And that's been really nice because, you know, we all kind of want to be in the same boat together. And uh it's probably the most I've seen the area superintendents actually work together and share ideas, you know, in quite some time. So hopefully that'll continue to move forward with that um collegiality, especially as we uh potentially encounter some loss of revenue this next year. You know, there may be some uh, you know, conversation about how we could um look at providing education or services together as a group. Speaking of that, um today I participated in a uh financial uh webinar that was run by the State Superintendent's Organization and the two ladies there were both uh state finance directors. And uh they talked about uh potential cuts to school aid yet this year, um as well as next year. Um, in that the state um is seeing a loss of revenue for fiscal year 2020, which is what we're currently in. Of course, as well as 2021, we're looking at um potential a loss of revenue this year. Again, this is an estimate, these are not hardcore facts, um of two point six billion dollars this year and three point two billion next year. And Ian, while I'm talking, would you see if Brian needs to be let in because he just texted? Um, so thanks for that. Um, so what does that mean? Um, it could, uh, we don't have any hardcore numbers on what that could mean for this year. But if there was a cut in revenue yet this year, um we might see that announcement sometime in May after the revenue consensus hearing on May 15th. Um, and then they're supposed to give us a 30-day warning, if you will, with our state aid payment coming on the 20th of the month. Uh, June 20th might see a reduction as well as July as well as August. So um, you know, and what that means for next year, wow, you know, stay tuned. Uh, there was also some discussion about whether uh we could get the state to delay the deadline for uh school budgets, which is due June 30th. You know, would the state legislature consider changing that date to maybe August 31st? Since the state doesn't know what kind of shape they're in, um how can schools, you know, do their best laid plans as well? Uh, because of all of that, um which is um a lot of unknown, but a lot of, you know, crystal ball doesn't look very good. Um, I'm really glad that we ran this year as we did. I'm glad that um despite the fact that we, you know, might wanted to have had, you know, two fourth and two fifth over at Sawyer. I'm glad we did a combination class because again, we didn't have the kids to support that group of people. But lo and behold, you know, the money that we save from not employing um that person or, you know, that teacher um is now money we have as a cushion, part of our cushion for this potential cut to come. And whereas we were hoping that the year would end well for us and and have a little bit to put in the pot for next year. Um, it could be that our, what we have right now um is gonna be enough of a cushion to get us through without going in the hole. And so I'm just real grateful that we ran, you know, the year that we did, um as we did. And um, you know, know that we're not alone in this. I mean, every single district is um in the same boat we are at looking at potential cuts in revenue. And you know, what does that mean to us? They also, another question that came out from another superintendent at the meeting today was, you know, whether uh districts would see a cut in pupil count because of kids now being home, you know, being kind of homeschooled and yet, you know, education provided by the school. Would this um impact our student count at all next year? And again, that remains to be seen. We've been very blessed to have um a solid 1030 the last uh year or so. And we've been able to bank on that number. And right now, if I had to throw a dart and project a student count, that'd be, that would be um an interesting question we'll have to pose to Amy and I soon, because we will have to put a, a student number in that budget for next year. But just know that there's just a lot of impact on this. It's, it's gonna be a bouncing ball, but um, you know, I feel confident in our leadership skills and in the board um support to pull us through whatever this looks like. And that's really, um other than some specific things that I have on the agenda under information, that would be about it for the board update portion.
Thank you, Sandy. Is there any correspondence?
No.
Okay, next we're gonna go to information, COVID-19 update.
So I would remind everyone of the Governor Executive Order 202035. So on your printed agenda there, you can just correct the 25 at the end there to 35. That is the executive order, of course, that to closed our brick and mortar schooling down. And um you all were given a copy of that and just a a couple of quick updates um or reminders of that. Um, all student assessments were canceled, for example, with the junior SAT next fall. Um, no makeup days required of us because we got our learning plan in place. And school ends on June 5th then, which is our regular last day of school, so we don't have any makeup days to worry about. Um, the order does require us to pay all of our employees. And so um just know that we are sticking to essential work for the month of April. Um, so you know, some people might say, well, can we start um some summer cleaning? Well, we may be able to do that in May and certainly that would save on any summer costs of cleaning, which would definitely be uh my vote to get it going and get it started. Right now, where our school is very busy because we have our Chromebook deployment tomorrow and um our bags going out tomorrow. So there wouldn't be room for summer cleaning right now this week anyway, but perhaps we would start looking that in May. You know, because right now we are on essential work only uh with the governor's order. And that means for us, again, food service, helping to deploy our learning plan. Teachers have been in getting some of their materials ready and getting their lessons online. Looking at um, you know, getting the bags ready and the Chromebooks ready and um. There's just, you know, lots of essential work like that, that we've had uh employees on a rotating basis. So rotating by the week, for example, in food service, so that we don't have the employees in here um every other day, different people. But in food service. But in food service, the employees are taking it a week at a time as assigned by Barbie, so that cuts down on any exposure risk as well. And I would um, tell you that our continuity of learning plan is on our website um, as required by law. So if you look on our website, under the um, transparency button, it is uh, right there listed at the top. So you can see the learning plan that was turned in by um, the district to Marissa and approved by them, and then they then turn it into the state. And um, I've seen some of those lessons. There is just, it's amazing what teachers can do uh, when they're given a, a few online tools and some creativity and um, who wouldn't, who wouldn't want to engage in that learning? And I'm really hoping that our families will, and particularly the students, of course, because we cannot hold any student um, in a penalty mode for not participating. So it's kind of a, you know, we've already had a few parents ask, well, why should I have to fight that at home? But we're hoping the kids will think about next year. We're hoping the parents will think about next year because I think if kids choose not to participate now, they are, it might not impact them so much now, but I think it's really gonna have an effect when they come back in the fall, um, if they haven't been uh, with us for the next two months. I would defer to Brad. Brad, if you wanna talk about um, how your deployment is working, talk about your Chromebooks. Maybe how many Chromebooks you think you might have going out? Um, and give us a little update, Brad, on any thoughts about graduation.
Well, let's see, been a busy week here. Um, we have all our Chromebooks organized, lockers emptied, um, homework pack, it's all put together. That was quite a task at the secondary level. Um, getting all the kids organized for the seven different classes and whatnot, but we have that all ready to go. Got a crew coming in tomorrow. Um, we'll knock out half the alphabet tomorrow and the other half on Wednesday, so pretty confident that's gonna roll off good. Let's see, um, I'm sharing a, a formal written version of the grading process, the students with the credit, no credit plan we had discussed. Uh, we did get confirmation from the NCAA that we will not have any negative impact of having our students earn a credit or no credit for the second semester. We're, had a team of teachers help me out with that, putting the final wording together now. I'll be sharing that tonight. Um, let's see. Other items, Sandy, you got one other thing you wanted me to talk about? I missed one.
Uh, graduation.
Graduation. Right now on the calendar, it still is as is. Um, the principals from the Marissa area will be meeting on May first, on Friday, May first, to see where the governor has us as far as our state home order. If we have any limitations on group sizes at that time. Um, and I would say immediately after the meeting on May first, we'll be start coordinating if that's gonna change. Cause there's a strong possibility that'll have to change, whether it's a different date, same style. Um, or as John Wilder just kinda alluded to there, a change of what it looks like. Could it be outside? Would it have to be virtual? What's it gonna be? So, so I've been taking some notes and stealing some stuff from the internet that what other schools are doing and we'll have multiple plans of uh, what to do.
Um, thanks. Uh, Marcy, I had also um, request you talk about uh, Chromebooks and bag deployment and how things are looking at elementary school. And if you wanna even address some of those elementary lessons, that'd be awesome also.
Uh, elementary is going great. Um, everybody's working hard. We have all of our bags are ready to go. Um, we'll have everybody come through, hopefully just once. I uh, today we went in and put all the bags in family groups. So then when people come through, they can collect all the bags that they need to take. Um, Chromebooks, probably an average of maybe six per class, so not a whole lot, but enough. Um, keeps rolling in with a couple here and a couple there. The iPad broke, so they needed Chromebook kind of a thing going on, so I foresee that happening probably right through till the end, that we'll have to just keep giving them out one at a time after this big give out. Um, teachers were awesome. We are going to, we used uh, ClassDojo. Thank goodness we had a good platform to start with at elementary, about ninety-five, ninety, I'd say ninety-three to ninety-five percent of our kids in elementary land are on Dojo. Um, our parents are on Dojo, so we decided to use Google Slides as our device to send out our lessons to kind of organize that um, for parents. Our lessons go out on Mondays. Um, I'm sure Ashley, you've seen them. Don, you might have seen some of the elementary stuff. Um, I know uh, TJ, you've seen the elementary stuff. Hopefully you're getting it and you're able to open it. Um, I know some parents right now are a little, you know, they're itching to get their Chromebook, so tomorrow will be good when everybody gets it. We haven't had too many tweaks that we have to do, have to have to change or do, um, so everything's working out pretty good.
It's been really beautiful at our house with it, and we don't even have our Chromebook yet, but even on the iPad, it's, it's worked really, really well. So we've been really happy with, with the process and it's been easy.
Good. That was my hope. My hope was easy for teachers and easy for parents as well. Um, I kinda think of Google Slides as the home button on your, on your iPhone, if you have an iPhone. Um, you know, you kinda get lost out there in the web sometimes when you're looking for stuff and when you're clicking on things, but if you get lost, the parents can go back or the kids can go back to the original slideshow slide and they can find where they came from. So it's a little bit easier to navigate that way. I'm finding that teachers are having an easy time. Um, I haven't heard anybody struggling. Um, Whitney Buckin and Tricia Milu have been awesome doing little um, professional developments. Ian, you too have been great, um, helping them out. They're really taking this um, started off, we've only, we're only on second week and the first week um, was pretty basic and now I'm seeing people videotaping themselves and um, I can't wait to see what next week brings. Do you want me to share an actual one, Sandy, or just talk about it?
Just talking about it's fine. Appreciate, um, just, you know, kind of a flavor of what's going on. So you're good?
That's it, yep.
Okay, and then I would add um, to that, that I can't uh, thank Brad and Marcy enough for the leadership that they have shown throughout um, developing the plans with their teachers in their buildings, getting their Chromebooks organized, getting the bags organized. They have put in numerous hours, um, just in the last two weeks, getting all of this lifted up off the ground. And I know they'll be glad when Friday comes and hopefully we have the majority of everything out. Um, and if we don't have people show up, you know, we'll figure that out on a case by case basis. If we need to go out and deliver something or give it to a neighbor or whatever, and so anybody that's posted on Facebook, we have just encouraged them to contact their um, child's school and leave a detailed message so that we can work with each family on a one by one basis um, as to what works out best for the family. So again, as board members, if you hear any of that or have any questions, um, the best thing is to call school and leave a message, cause we are in and out, the secretaries are in and out and somebody will eventually get to that phone call, okay? Um, does any of the board members have any questions about any of that for Brad or Marcy or me? Okay, then I'm gonna move on to the strategic plan update. Um, now that our continuity of learning plan is done, check that off the list. Um, I now will be revisiting the format on how to update and share project uh, progress on the strategic plan. Um, truly, the whole COVID thing has just totally absorbed um, our time. And um, hopefully it'll now be nice these next seven weeks to get back to some of that other business that we used to do before March thirteenth hit us. Likewise, with the sinking fund, um, Amy Scott and I are in a series of meetings to determine our recommendations for projects to be done and when. Kind of a repeat of what you've already heard me say, you know, we need to determine along with um, uh, probably in May with the um, board uh, building and site committee, looking at what projects uh, would be up first. Would we consider doing any of those projects yet this summer? If so, what does that borrowing look like in order to do that? Cause we can borrow against that tax revenue. We're not gonna see that tax revenue until the winter tax collection. And so what might be a summer project, and I'll use the Sawyer um, sinks and particularly those drinking fountains, you know, that are closed off because of lead content. We have to determine, are we gonna fix the four um, faucets um, and um, bubblers as Scott calls them? Are we gonna look at the whole plumbing project? We would have to get that um, priced out, we would have to get a quote on that, multiple quotes, we would have to determine uh, whether or not we then wanna borrow that amount of money to fix that and what would that borrowing cost in order to get that project fixed this summer? If we decided that it was too cost prohibitive to borrow um, against that tax collection, then we would have to wait until the tax collection occurs this coming school year and then fix that project the next summer. Because uh, projects such as plumbing, for example, you would need to do when kids weren't gonna be in school. So those are the conversations that again, we can now pick up um, after I feel like we're gonna be in a little bit of a routine now for the next seven weeks. And certainly we'll be looking at the uh, board building and site committee to give us some input on that and meet with us. And for everyone, I would remind you that those sinking fund year one project list is again on our website under the sinking fund tab, and you can see what the intent was and what we have publicized out to the public as um, year one projects. So regarding that whole uh, strategic planner sinking fund, does the board have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I've got one on the uh, um, for the millage when we go, or uh, for the requests. When you're sending out bidding for the projects, could you uh, talk to the union halls too to see if they're willing to donate labor for some of this stuff? Um, such as the carpenters' union or the plumbers or whoever, electricians, they might be willing to donate labor towards that, as long as we purchase the supplies.
Yeah, and we'll um, certainly take that under consideration. We'd also have to see liability wise. Um, how that, how that volunteer labor, if you will, would fall under liability. Because often when you have a contractor come in or you bid that project out, um, they have to be bonded. And so would the volunteers be bonded? So we'd have to check all of that out, you know? But definitely I would never say no to volunteer labor. It'll just be a process to see um, if that would work or not.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I do have one comment about it. Um, when we're going into this and looking at borrowing towards the sinking fund, I just wanna make sure that we're super transparent with that and the cost, we're cost efficient, because if it's gonna be a large quantity to borrow, I don't think that's a good idea. So I think that that's something that we definitely need to be transparent with, with the community.
And I've already, not that anybody remembers what those Friday videos have been about, but I've already mentioned that very, that very thing. Uh, one of the first Friday updates I did, where I talked about the sinking fund, I talked about borrowing and I talked about, we would wanna know what the cost of it was because we also wanna be good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. So I'm with you a hundred percent on all of that, and I'll continue to say that. Um, certainly as I continue to talk about the sinking fund on those Friday updates. Anybody else? Okay, so um, as you go into new business and you have to take a vote, um, it is recommended that all of those votes be by roll call, just so we can make sure that everyone uh, has voted in this virtual format.
Okay, thank you. So certified election results are on page twenty-four. And we need to approve them from the Marquette canvassers, so I need a motion to approve the vote.
I'll make a motion to approve um, the Marquette County Board of Canvassers election results.
I need a second? Okay, and then I'm gonna need a roll call. Ashley?
Hi, yes, whatever.
Brad?
Yes.
TJ?
Yep, yes.
John?
There it is, yes.
Avis?
It looks like you lost, Avis. Her picture's gone.
Okay, did Brian ever get on?
Oh, look at Brian is on, he's on the bottom.
And Avis is on her back, on her way back in.
Yeah, I'm here.
We need a yes or a no from you to
Yes.
Myself is, okay, thank you. Myself is yes. Is Avis back on?
Avis has disappeared.
Okay. Okay, motion carried. So next, we're going to go to gifts and donations. We have from Superior Health Foundation, five hundred dollar cash donation to the Gwinne area community school suit, food service department to help cover costs of school lunches during the COVID nineteen school closure. Fox and Agani, two hundred dollars in cash donation to the Gwinne area community schools food service department to help cover costs of school lunches during the COVID nineteen school closure. Econo Foods of Marquette, twelve hundred paper grocery bags valued at ninety-six dollars donated to Gwinne area community schools to assist with the curbside school supply pickup for our students. Various donors for the seventh grade Clear Lake trip in October twenty twenty. Patrick and Diana Christensen, three hundred and thirty dollars. American Legion Morton Gunley Post, number three forty-nine, three hundred and thirty dollars. American Legion Auxiliary, three four nine, three hundred and thirty dollars. Mary Sharkey, twenty dollars. Barb Hill, ten dollars. Donors choose, um, varied, various donations listed below. Just Mercy and Books for Independent Reading Project valued at four hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. And do you have the next book project valued at five hundred and fifty-two dollars and twelve cents for Mrs. Holland's Classroom at GMS GHS? Take a Seat, a Flexible Classroom Space Project valued at two hundred and twenty-three dollars for Mrs. Waldo's Classroom at GMS GHS. Restart, a Chance to Reflect and Regroup Project valued at five hundred and eighty-four dollars for Mrs. Briggs Classroom at GMS GHS. I need a motion to approve this.
Make a motion to approve the gifts with appreciation.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, is there any public comment? No, none heard.
None has come in yet.
Okay, board member comments. Ashley, you got anything?
Sure, I, I would just like to really thank all the administration, um, and the staff. I think, you know, everybody had to kinda make a hard right turn into teaching online. I know, um, in my family, it's been a challenge, cause I'm still working full-time from home. And so we've had to adjust our schedules to being teachers and learners and everything, and it's just been really impressive to see all of this come together and I'm really proud to be a part of the, the district and to have, have the teachers behind our students that we do. So thanks to all the teachers and administration.
Brad?
I would like to just echo what Jen, or Ashley was saying there. Um, you guys do an awesome job. Um, I know my wife is home with the kids all day while I'm at work and she's had to suspend uh, two her students already, so thank you everybody.
John?
Well, I guess uh it would just, same thing Ashley and Brad were talking about, you know, the teachers had to step up and some of them had to get outside of their comfort zone and go into this new online type learning. Uh, I never thought I would see the day that anything like this would ever close a school down for any length of time. Um, I, I just hope that everybody stays safe. I mean, I'm kind of a naysayer and the whole thing. I think most of you realize that. And not surprised, but I just hope everybody stays safe regardless, and, you know, we look out for each other and uh next year we come back strong.
Thank you. Brian?
Well, hats off to everyone and keep the good work going. It's definitely been a unique year and it's not over yet, so everybody stay positive and carry on. Thank you.
Thank you. TJ?
Yeah, I'd just like to uh, you know, thank uh, thank all the administrations, staff and teachers uh for uh adapting, uh and especially not not just relying on the online learning and making, making uh learning available for those students that don't have access, the same access that everybody, you know, that, that uh with the online resources and things like that, so making sure that they're not uh, that those students aren't neglected and they're still able to get uh some of the learning that, that, that they deserve. Um, and, you know, maybe really just kinda looking at this whole process as a way that we can um, we might be able to continue it with uh, with some online learning um for some of the students that maybe uh don't adapt so well to in-person schooling, you know, maybe we can take some of these and some of these ideas and, and things that, that we're doing and being able to have this as an option for uh, for some other students who may leave the district if, if uh, if they had to keep coming to school. That's it, so good job.
Thank you. So I have, Ava's just texted me, she's having some technical difficulty with her um access to get back into the meeting. So Ava said that she would just like to thank everyone from the bottom of her heart, to the teachers and staff, and how much she appreciates the hard work that has went into this. And what I would like to say is, you know, just echoing everybody that the, the staff administration has been outstanding through this all. Um, I am super proud to be a model towner. I can't believe how they have taken this situation and turned it into being, you know, my kids are excited for school and most of you that know my kids know that's, that's a pretty big feat right there. I mean, they're really excited for it. They are enjoying it, so I appreciate that. So the two things I wanted to say is, um, West Branch Township is offering their Wi-Fi at the building, if you wanna use it, if there's somebody in, you know, Scandia, they can't, doesn't have Wi-Fi. They're, they're boosting their Wi-Fi so that you can go to the parking lot or the pavilion and use it if the kids need it for homework, however, still respect the governor's executive order and stay six feet apart. And a kind of a funny story, my neighbor texted me the other day and she said, hey, you know, since all these people are now homeschool teachers, I bet you the school board could pretty much get any bond to pass or sinking fund to pass at this point. So I just wanted to throw that out there. So thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you, Sandy, for everything. That's all I have. So we're going to adjourn the meeting at seven sixteen.
Thanks, everyone.